To welcome everybody to our final meeting within our old chamber here. So, our next meeting, February 25th, will be over at the new City Hall building. So, we'll get to do an open house, a ribbon cutting, and invite all you guys over to truly a wonderful building, state of the art. Everybody who's had a hand in that's done a fantastic job. And so, Amarillo has a new home. Today, though, we will conduct our final business meeting here today. And I'd just like to start by thanking each and every one of you for participating in your meeting. So, if you would, we're going to call ourselves to order officially. And then, I would ask everybody to rise. We're going to have Will Essler come in and give our invocation, and then we'll do both pledges. Please. Right in that microphone, please, Will.
This is a variation of a prayer that Chaplain Peter Marshall prayed before the U.S. Senate in 1947. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, every breath is a gift and every day is an opportunity to live out that great commandment, to love you and to love others. Save this moment, O Lord, from being merely a gesture to custom or convention, and make it a real experience for each one of us in this place as we call upon you for guidance and for help. We have felt you near and beside us. Make us now to feel your nearness in the business of the day, the unseen delegate, present and voting. Work through these leaders, we pray, O Jesus, that what they say and what they do may be in accordance with your will for this city that we love so much. As one chapter closes and a new sin begins in a renewed building, remind us that you, O God, are writing a larger story of redemption and renewal. You have said, "It's more blessed to give than to receive." Give us the grace today to think not of what we can give but of what we can give, that a new spirit may come into our work here with a new vision and a new purpose that you will delight and bless. We ask these things in your own name and for your sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. If you'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag as well?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Guys, we're going to go down there. You got the proclamation? So, we have a proclamation that we're going to read here first, so we're going to come down there and read the proclamation. Anyone that I have here for Engineers Week that's accepting this, please come forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas licensed professional engineers are dedicated to applying scientific knowledge, mathematics, and innovations to develop solutions for technical, societal, and commercial challenges, all by pulling together high commitments to public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas the licensed professional engineers in the Amarillo community can favor market competitions at both local and national level, shaping infrastructure, advancing technology, enhancing the quality of life for our residents. And whereas the continued growth and prosperity of Amarillo's economy are made possible in part by the ingenuity, dedication, and leadership of its licensed professional engineers whose work is integral to the strength and sustainability of our community. And whereas the Texas Society of Professional Engineers, in partnership with the National Society of Professional Engineers, has designated the week of February 16th through June 22nd, 2025, as Engineers Week to honor the commitment and excellence of engineers across all 50 states and U.S. territories. Now, therefore, we, Mayor and City Council of the City of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim February 16th through June 22nd, 2025, as Engineers Week. And the City of Amarillo encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate the valuable contributions of our engineers to our community and beyond.
If you want to speak.
Yes, sir. I just have a few notes just so I don't forget some of the details, but I get to stand before you as the president of our society and the local chapter. Anything in order to claim to you and is within the bounds of the Texas Panhandle is part of our chapter as the professional society for engineers. We come to you as licensed professional engineers, engineers in training, not necessarily saying engineers in training specifically, are these people over here, but we come from all forms through the path to becoming an engineer. We're well educated and have a code that we follow. And I just wanted to say that we are here because of 88 years ago on March 18th, on a day that was relatively cool like this, everything was going on as normal, life was proceeding as usual, but a series of choices in the design, the construction, and the choice for heating system at the school culminated in 317, leading to a sudden, immediate explosion of the main school building and the immediate collapse, leading to the death of 300 individuals, primarily children between ages of 10 and 17. It was then in 1938 on January 1st that the Engineering Practice Act was passed to clarify the responsibility in the design of such structures and such public works to create professional transparency in our profession and to overall protect the health, safety, and well-being of the public. And that's what our code is, that we come to you every day, we try to build trust with the public. And this proclamation shows that through projects like the power grid that engineers have constructed and maintained every single day, the prano of water plants and pipeline that provides water to habitable people in the Texas Panhandle, as well as not just our necessities for modern life, like electricity and water, but as well as purification projects that we can see on hold that are happening right now. We come to you as professional engineers, we build trust every day, and we thank you.
We're going to put you right in the middle. Okay, thank you, guys, for letting us do that here today. I appreciate all of our engineers, engineer community that showed up for that recognition. Item number six is announcements. Ms. City Secretary, do you or the deputy have any announcements today?
The only announcement we have, Mayor, is just to remind our community that we will have our grand opening of our new City Hall on February 25th. And so, we will have a ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m. and tours up until 1:00 p.m., and then our first meeting in the new chamber at 3:00 p.m. that day.
Really good. So, we will move out of announcements and into our public comment period. Back over to you, Ms. City Secretary, if you read us into that and bring up our first speaker.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for participating in today's council meeting. Your input and your opinions are important to us, and we're glad you're here to share them today. At each posted meeting, we invite our fellow community members to address City Council regarding posted agenda items or topics related to city business. Every speaker today will have three minutes to address the council. At the end of two and a half minutes, you'll hear a warning beep, letting you know you have 30 seconds to wrap up your thoughts. We do have a public hearing today. If you're here to speak on that public hearing, we would ask that you speak either during the public hearing or during public comment, but not both, in order to help us keep accurate records of the meeting. It's your choice at which time you'd like to speak. When you come to the microphone today, please state your name, whether or not you live in Amarillo City Limits, and then you may begin addressing council. Again, thank you for being here today. We have two individuals signed up. First is Misty Collier, and on deck after Misty will be Cassie Green.
My name is Misty Collier. I'm a taxpayer in Potter County, and I would just ask... Can you hear me now?
I think so. Thank you, Misty.
Okay, I'll start over. My name is Misty Collier. I'm a taxpayer in Potter County, and I would just ask that you please pass 10D. It is an ordinance to save our data privacy rights. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty.
Next is Cassie Green.
Thank you, gentlemen. And my name's Cassie Green, and I'm a resident of Amarillo. I have here an ordinance to protect our inherent human rights and privacy for the citizens of Amarillo concerning technology. And can I provide this for you guys? Mayor Collier?
Yes, do you have several copies?
Yes.
Bring them on up. We'll give you the time back here if it takes to do it.
Okay. So, this is what...
I'll take them. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Speak directly.
Speak directly, okay. So, we have, we have a team that has constructed this ordinance, and, I mean, you guys can look over it. I don't know if y'all want me to read over it, but what we believe this does is helps safeguard concerning conversational cities and the new technologies that we're fast embracing. This will help us, I feel like, safeguard us, you know, and protect our rights. So, we would like, whenever you guys do choose, an ordinance to consider this one.
Ms. Cassie, I appreciate that. That item is 8E, was going to be discussed, so as a statement of fact here with you, was going to be discussed today. Rich is not here with us today. They have an illness, and so, we'll push that to the next meeting. But what we will do, now we're all in possession of this, we'll read through it. Can you tell us, was, is this your ordinance, or was this one Rich was working on and you redlined it?
This is our ordinance, yes.
Okay.
And we have provided it for him. So, he's had it to look at, to, if he wanted to implement some of the thoughts and ideas from ours into his, he's had that opportunity. I don't know if he has, but this is definitely our version of what we feel like would protect our rights.
Okay, great. Well, we will read this and then engage in a discussion with Mr. Gagnon before next meeting. And I apologize, we had to pull it today. We've got a few other items that are being pulled today as well due to illness, so... But thank you for speaking.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, that concludes everyone that signed up today.
Do I have anyone else here today that would like to offer public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Fisher, if you come forward.
My name is Mike Fisher, by the way, but before I start, 8G, I may have, may want to discuss it, or think you guys should take into consideration, because I'm assuming what it might be about, is the first thing I'm going to mention here, is I still don't have my data, my AEDC data. That's what I'm asking for. I've been asking for this before, before Elon Musk started prying around, and it's kind of right in line with what he's doing. You know, I have two themes, I figured out two themes of things I talk about when I come here. Like, last week, I'm kind of trying to read between the lines, and it's kind of like that old ESPN thing where they go, "Come on, man." And you look at me, and I look at you, and you know what I'm saying, and I know what you're saying. And, or it's, "What's up with that?" And this week is coming, "What's up with that?" So, last week, our last council meeting, Les Simpson, you, you seem to be very astute with trying to save our council money, save our city money, and be responsible. You've kind of had me confused this whole two years, and it looked like the real Les Simpson stood up last, at the last council meeting. And it's the, it's the Les Simpson that headed the LGC that built all this stuff around here that's failed. The, you know, you, you want to save $250,000 for outside council, but you were on the LGC when we built a $25 million parking garage across the street. And then, we sold, you were on the council, you were on the LGC when we built it, and then you're on this council when we sold it. Cost $5 million, and you voted to sell it for 1.9. I believe you, you voted on that. So, we took a $3 million loss, and you're worried about outside council. So, then I started wondering, "What's going on here? Why is Les so adamant about this?" You were visibly, like, kind of pretty pissed off. And so, so I started looking. And your house, the house you live in right now is, was owned by a company controlled by Allen Rhodes, of the Underwood Law Firm, the law firm that you always recommend, the one that you always say, "Let's go talk to those guys." The law firm that probably Brian McWilliams, that's where his real bosses are. So, then we started digging even more. So, we looked, and we found where the same company controlled by Allen Rhodes, you guys have a diagram of it and, and a timeline, and you have all the PR documents that show that prove all this, was tied to Freeman, our assistant city manager. So, we have Andrew Freeman, the same house that he owned at, at one point, was owned by a realtor that's well-connected, but before he owned it, it was owned by the same company owned by Allen Rhodes. So, so this is, this is better than Oprah. Who gets a house? Who else got a house? Does anybody else get a house in here? So, what I want to know is, is you guys that know all this information, I'll close, I'll wrap it up. The people that know all the information here, the city people that know all the information here, when you watch and you see people go to jail, it's always the guys that are pushing the paperwork. It's never the lawyers, it's never the bankers. So, if you guys know something, come forward. I know somebody, I know somebody that's working on this in law enforcement, and if you guys want to come forward now, because you're going to end up going to jail, and these lawyers, they're going to watch you go to jail, and they're going to come back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Do I have anyone else here today who'd like to offer public comment? Okay. We won't leave that hanging out there too long. So, appreciate everyone for being here and speaking today. We are going to move forward into item 8. Item 8A, do I have anything that council members would like to pull off for the agenda for further review before we get into our discussion items? Looks like we're all good. Okay, so, we have noticed the public for item 8B. AEDC Corporation, or AEDC Presentation and Update from the Chairperson, that is Alex Fairley. And so, Alex has been working on several things over there, and so, he has a presentation ready. We were obviously ready for this today, and this body, this board, was eagerly awaiting this because we, we think that this is an important part in educating our public and also taking those next critical steps. We have several things that we need to get done, everything from placing the, the permanent board, to going out and getting a search, a search company, a consulting firm that could help us look for a new director. We've got a lot of turnover and a lot of change there, and so, I, I wanted to have this today, but Mr. Fairley is sick with, I think, the flu, and so, he wasn't going to be able to be here today. What I would ask for council to consider, you know, we could wait until the 25th of February, but that's going to be a full day of ribbon cutting and, and open house and several other things that are going to be on your agenda. I would like to know if council understands and kind of sees it the same way I do. This, this presentation is ready. I hate to let it sit and linger for the public. I know the public would like to hear it as well. I don't know how long he might be unavailable, but I would assume this week. Would council entertain a, a special meeting perhaps next week, and what does your availability look like? Councilman Craft, what do you look like?
I can do Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Tuesday, the 18th, we have an AEDC meeting at 9:00.
Well, it might be good if we were able to do it after that, just because you guys would be able to get your meeting. I would love that temporary board to be able to discuss, do you guys, as a temporary body, want to look and search for the, the director? Do you guys feel the need to have a permanent board placed? Do we need to take that step, that, that are, that one as our next step? Do we also feel like we, we have some additional work to do there within that body? And so, Tuesday, that, 9:00 a.m., what do you have, Councilman Tibbs?
Well, same.
You're at 9:00?
Well, 9:00 for the EDC. Other than that, I'm pretty open on that Tuesday, or, as Craft said...
Councilman Sherlin, you're good? Okay. Yes, sir?
I would be good that time, any day and, anytime until about 3:00 o'clock, but anytime between 10:00 a.m. and, and 3:00 p.m., I would be good that day.
Okay. To give ourselves a fallback here, I don't know if maybe the board, Mr. Fairley, Depok, and a few others would be available or not, what would be an alternate day later in the week for the rest of council? Are we open on that Friday if we need it? Shoot for Tuesday and then fall back to Friday if we needed some more time, perhaps with an illness?
I'm good with the Friday.
Councilman Simpson?
I'd be good Friday, anytime other than between 11:00 and noon.
Great. Craft, Friday's open?
Yes, sir.
Anytime before 3:00.
Before 3:00, okay. Deputy Freeman, I know you and I visited earlier today. Have you had any time to research a possible venue? This won't be available, we don't think, after today. I think we're taking next steps, so...
Yeah, we've got a couple of options, most likely, at the Civic Center that we can finalize.
Okay. So, what we would, what we would like to do is, we would like to have a special working session between both boards, and I think the, the goal would be to receive the presentation, and then based on that presentation, we may have some next steps, but then we're also wanting to hear from that board, when will you be ready, you think, for either a search for a new director or, you know, trying to get the permanent board placed next? So, those next steps. So, my former Councilman Smith, I know you and I visited earlier today. Did, am I covering everything, or would you have anything else to add with, with kind of some of your urgencies?
One thing that, one thing that we talked about was, I see a need to get a search firm to help us, and I understand there are search firms that concentrate on EDCs.
Okay.
And I'd like to get a list of those so that we can discuss that in the future. Don't want to hold that up too much. That's it.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I can see we've got most of our board here present, so we will need to get Mr. Fairley scheduled, but Depok and Howard, are either of you guys available or not available next Tuesday or Friday?
Friday works.
Friday works, okay.
I'm available.
You're available, great. Really appreciate you guys and the, the availability on that. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I would like to direct this, I will follow up with Mr. Fairley after the meeting, and I'll see kind of what we can do, and then we'll schedule this work session. We'll, we'll come up with everything that we feel like both boards could potentially benefit from in a, in a meeting. Relay that over to you and let you find the venue.
Do you know what time it starts checking in?
I'm going to, I'll bring you some time, so if they're meeting Tuesday at 9:00, I think we could meet either as early as like 11:00, if that doesn't push their agenda, I'd need to look at it, or maybe right after lunch, 1:00 on Tuesday. If we go to Friday, I would shoot for Friday mid-morning, like 10:00, 9:00 maybe, knowing that we have a, a few people that are obligated around 3:00. So, if you could check those availabilities, it'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I know several people in the public that have, that have come here for this meeting, and I sincerely apologize that we don't have that presentation for you today, but we, we understand the urgency, and we'll get it out there for you just as soon as possible. And then, we are keen on making these improvements and getting our EDC up and running and, and full speed ahead, so we appreciate your patience as we work through that. Item 8C, park debt issuance. Mr. Kishuba, if you're ready, I'm going to have you come up and present that.
Mayor and Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. The item we're bringing before you today is some projects that we would like to consider for debt funding. This is something, we started the conversation back during budget, and really what we're trying to do as a department is find a balanced approach for funding projects, using both debt and also cash. We know that, that helps us to provide some financial stability, some sustainable growth, and also optimizing those capital funds. Obviously, we know that the debt projects would be the projects that generally we can't fund out of our current annual budget, and we would save the cash funding for the projects that we could do, the smaller projects, that would be more on a departmental level. I'm going to walk through some of those. Here's, here's a list of some of the projects that we would like council to consider. So, whether it's a lighting project, the parking lot projects, the pump stations at the golf courses, facility renovation, or some equipment, and I'll walk through each of those in a little bit more detail. So, when we're talking about the lighting projects, the three that we are proposing as a part of the debt funding would be Thompson, John Stiff, and Memorial. We know that with the previous projects we've done at Sam Houston, San Jacinto, and Medical Center Park, obviously, it increases safety, it's a public safety issue that we want to address. We know that it extends those park hours, it improves the visibility and accessibility for those that want to use the park kind of in low-light conditions. We know that it will also improve the, the overall look of the park. So, when we start looking at these parks, for example, Thompson, we look at what's included in there. It would be lighting all of the roadways, the trail lighting, the parking lots, the dog park, and then some of those athletic courts that are up near the front of the park. So, pretty much a turnkey project throughout that entire park. John Stiff, I know we've had individuals get up in front of council and talk about the volleyball court lighting and how dark John Stiff is, and as a department, we would 100% agree. And so, what we would be proposing there is trail lighting throughout the park, parking lot lighting, dog park lighting, sand volleyball lighting, skate park lighting, and playground lighting. So, it would basically be... So it would basically be lighting the entire park in addition to those athletic fields that are already lit. And then Memorial would be the trail lighting, tennis and pickleball, and then also the basketball and volleyball courts. That park gets a lot of walking traffic, a lot of people that'll go walk it in the mornings and in the evenings, and it's an extremely dark park. So those are the lighting projects that we would like Council to consider. You can see the budgetary estimates beside it of what we think those projects would cost. When we start talking about parking lots, this is, the three parking lots that we're considering would be associated with John Stiff and also Rick Klein. The scope of the project obviously would include the parking lots, any kind of landscape that's needed, ADA improvements, drainage, and any kind of irrigation that may be required. With John Stiff, we see a huge influx of cars, especially during the weekends when we've got those youth sports activities happening. I know that we've had some issues with illegal parking, safety issues, especially near the no parking at Bell. We've had some enforcement issues, and APD's raised some concerns about the parking, the traffic along John Stiff specifically on the weekends. And then with Rick Klein, it's that large undeveloped parking lot to the south. It's just a big dirt lot. So you can see on the map, we've got the three locations highlighted. So the one we would propose on the south side would be just south of the Sandy Field. The one at the north would be in that undeveloped space that could also be used for special events. And then obviously, the one at Rick Klein would be on the south side. So we estimate the north lot at John Stiff would be about 210 spots. The one at the south side would be about 170. And then Rick Klein would be over 360 spots. Rick Klein gets a lot of use on the weekends. We may have three or four big events happening at the same time, whether it's track meet, baseball, softball, soccer, football, all happening simultaneously. So there's a great need for parking there. One of the other projects that we're proposing is the Memorial Park gazebo. This, it's kind of a misnomication. Everybody thinks that gazebo is just a metal building out in the park. This one actually has a basement underneath it. It's approximately 1,500 square feet. It was actually built about 75 years ago and has suffered kind of moderate to severe deterioration due to moisture exposure, which has affected some of the rebar concrete. And you can kind of see some of that in those pictures. The overall goal would obviously to be to enhance the structural stability of that facility, but also prolong that lifespan of that project. Just as kind of a side note, I had staff pull some numbers. We had 135 rentals in that space last year. Weddings, birthday parties, family reunions. It's heavily used in that basement space. And currently, the rental rate is 250 a day. 100 of it is refundable. So we see a lot of weddings. We see a lot of family reunions and other activities that happen in that space. So as a part of that, it would be, a lot of it is site issues, dealing with the drainage around the building, but then going in there and addressing some of those structural concerns that we've seen. One of the other things that we would like Council to consider are some pump stations for the golf courses. Generally, the life expectancy on those projects, or those pump stations, is about 20 years. The youngest one we have is 24. We've got 24, 25, 27, 28. A lot of the technology is obsolete. We're actually bringing in different parts and pieces, so we have to have multiple vendors out there to address any issues. One might be able to do the software. One might be able to deal with the motors and the pumps. But last year at Arrowhead, we had a point in the year where we were down to one pump out of three. And so we actually saw some pretty significant damage to the golf course because generally when those pumps fail, it's when they're running full throttle, which is the heat of the summer. And so for a month or two, we were down last year trying to get those pumps up and running. So we were limping the golf course along. So what we would propose is going in and replacing the pump stations at all four of those courses. And then the last thing we would like Council consideration on is some equipment. One of the things that we've been trying to do as a department is find efficiencies. Somebody with a shovel and a backhoe takes a while to dig something up. Or these hydro vacs, you can go in there, isolate it, do nice, clean, quick repairs. It'll allow our staff to get the work done a lot faster than the current technology and equipment that we're using. And the same thing with the mini excavator. It allows us to go in and make those repairs. The trenchers and the equipment we're using right now requires a CDL. These smaller ones, we can put on a smaller trailer, and then we won't have to use CDL-qualified staff. So those are the items that we have for Council consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of them.
Any questions, Council?
My question is on the debt service piece. How do you guys plan to pay for it?
Yeah, so one of the ideas, again, we kind of talked about, we've got an allocation of about $2 million annually that we use for our Parks E&amp;I. So what we would do is take a portion of that money out of our E&amp;I and designate it for debt service. So of that $2 million, it might be $1 million in debt service, and then that would leave us about $1 million for smaller projects that we could do on an annual basis. Again, when we started looking at the debt service, we're looking at the life expectancy of those different products, projects. So some of them might be a 10-year debt service, some might be a 15, some might be a 30-year, just depending on the expected life expectancy. So what we would propose is just taking some of that E&amp;I money annually and just using that for funding the debt service.
And Mayor and Council, we have Stephen Adams here with Specialized Public Finance to go over what a potential debt issuance would look like, based on the projects that Michael just presented and the life expectancy of each of those assets. And so he'll kind of tell you, show you what that would look like on an annual basis.
Mr. Adams, is it broken down per item?
Yes. Per item, just as Michael described, per life of the item?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And I think we have, there we go.
All right, I don't see. Yeah, here we go. Okay, so for each item, you can see, if you start with the 10-year life, we have the lighting projects, the hydro vac, and the mini ex vac. For the 20-year life, we have the pump stations, three pump stations. For the 25-year life, the lighting projects, 30-year life, parking lots, and gazebo. And so how that works out, from a debt service perspective, as you can see, the debt service starts at $1.7 million a year for those shorter projects, and then drops off to $1 million per year, then 500, a little over $500,000, and then in the out-years, it's about $250,000 per year. And so what we would do, we would wrap that up into one certificate of obligation, which is publication notice is an agenda item, I think 10A or B.
So state law requires to issue a certificate of obligation that you have to advertise twice in your local newspaper and post a notice on the city's website informing the public that we are thinking about issuing certificates of obligation and telling them when Council would consider that, which we are targeting April 8. And so you have an item on 10B, non-consent item 10B, to consider that. And so that, this discussion kind of rolls in with that item as well. And again, today is just a resolution to authorize us to notice people in the newspaper and on the website. There's no other action being taken related to this debt issuance today. It's just for the potential for us to come back and look at issuing debt.
Very well. Councilman Sherlin?
I've got a few questions. First of all, did y'all look at trying to fund this through budgeted items through a number of years or see how long it would take? Did y'all go there first, or did you just go to COs immediately?
No, so what we always look at is what we can do with the budget that Council's given us, that $2 million. And some of these projects are $4 million, so it would overlap multiple years. And that's where the conversation about, do we look at debt funding for some of those projects that exceed that $2 million budget that we have in our Parks E&amp;I? So that's where that conversation starts. We always look to see what we can do with that current money.
Another thing is, I believe the last time we talked about a, which I believe on this agenda, the fire apparatuses that we were looking at were around $13 million. It was going to be a CO. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And then we're looking at another $13 million today with another CO. All I'm seeing is we're taxing the taxpayers. And to get things, we need to learn to work within our budget. I mean, I just see going to taxpayers every time gets old real fast. And I understand, we got low taxes here. But if we do this project, we do that project, and this project, before long, we've got COs, I mean, we're looking at 26 million right now, which, do you know what that would increase taxes about approximately?
So this item that we're discussing is already included in the operating budget. This would have no impact on taxes. So this is in the annual budget that you all have already approved to go towards parks. They are requesting to take part of that annual budget and use it to fund debt-funded projects. And so there would not be any impact on taxes for this 13 million.
So we would just have a CO for the fire apparatus.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I would want to know, does any of this go to the INS side, or are you keeping it all O&amp;M?
I mean, the plan at this point is, yeah, all in the O&amp;M because it's already approved in their annual operating budget.
So it's all being proposed under operations and maintenance, so it wouldn't allow for an increase within the tax rate because you're moving it over to the INS side?
That is correct.
Not proposing it to go to the INS, okay?
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Councilman Simpson? Okay. Yes, sir.
So, Michael, I mean, where are these numbers coming from? So like the $400,000 on the gazebo, I mean, obviously, we haven't taken bids for that. Is that a guess? Is that, what do we look at?
No, so we had had early conversations with facilities about what we would expect those property, or those costs to be on that project. So those are some pretty good estimates based off of what Facilities has done on other projects. So it's a good ballpark to start from. We think that that's a reasonable price for that project.
Okay.
On a lot of the other lighting projects, you know, we've been working on lighting throughout town. And so we get good budgetary numbers from the vendor that we've been using. And you'll see it broken down on here. There's actually 10 and 25-year. That's just depending on the type of fixture. So you'll see park lighting as a 10-year and a 15-year. That's just based off of the warranty from the manufacturer. So the 10-year lights, we would put on a 10-year warranty or a 10-year schedule. The 25-year, we would put on a 25-years debt.
Okay. Have we seen, I know we've talked a lot about leasing our equipment. Like when we're looking at, I'm looking at $4 million for heavy equipment. Did we look at, instead of a capital outlay or debt issuance, are we looking, did we look at a lease? I mean, it seems like we're developing good relationships with some of these companies.
So the debt schedule, you see, of that only, I think, the parks' capital piece for those pieces of equipment, I think, is only $130,000. So those two pieces of equipment only come out to $130,000.
What was the $4 million I saw?
That, and you're leading right into the next discussion topic.
Oh.
So we're kind of presenting them together, I'm sorry, separate and together. So we're talking first about parks, and then we're also going to talk about some additional heavy equipment needs. But to your point, even on the leasing, we do, we have been talking with those groups a lot. On the fire apparatus, we were, the best rate we were quoted was at 4.79%. And you'll see in a later item today, the debt issuance came in at 3.24%, which is saving us anywhere from $1 million to $2 million over the life of that debt. And then additional leasing options we haven't looked at have been as high as just under 7% interest. So we are, we are looking at it from every angle. We're just trying to be conscious of the long-term cost of it as well. And so as Michael mentioned, about $130,000 of his proposal is related to heavy equipment. And then we'll bring Donnie up here in just a second to continue this conversation on the additional $4 million.
Got you. Okay. Yeah, I saw the two numbers, and I thought, I knew that for the hydro vac and the, but I didn't know where the 4 came. But that makes sense that we're looping all that together. So what you're saying is we're looking at best rate from a leasing company is about 7%. But right now, we've got a quoted rate for the other one, for fire apparatus, at 3.25%, so you're looking at the cost of money.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, and we've had, on the lease side, I think the lowest I've seen is about 4.79% at this point, and then as high as 7%. But again, we had favorable, a favorable competitive sell this morning that brought us as low as 3.24%.
Okay. All right, good. And just real quick, have we seen a decrease with the lighting projects that we've done in the parks that are done? Have we seen a decrease in incidents, I mean, crime-wise? Have we, do you know?
That would be a question for APD. I couldn't.
I realize that, but I thought you might know.
No, I mean, we know that a lot of people feel safer using those spaces. I know.
I'm sure.
Medical Center, we've got a lot more people out there walking, but.
Have we seen a reduction? Chief? Okay. Okay, thank you. And that's a good answer. I mean, it's not the answer we're asking for, but like, if you don't know, I appreciate that. So let me talk to maybe the things that I feel like you've been directed to do that you're doing very well. So you're going within your existing budget, and you're saying to yourself, hey, look, I can get some things that are 10, 15, 20-year life expectancies, 30-year. And rather than trying to cash fund these and save that money, you could look at a debt issuance within your rate. And I believe we appreciate that. This is a little confusing, so I think I got lost in the various equipment for the $4 million. To clarify, that doesn't have anything to do with your budget.
No, all we have is the $130,000.
So the $130,000 for the hydro vac and the mini X, you know, being a construction kid myself, if you're using that thing more than 50% of the week, I think you want to own it. If you're using that less than 50% during your week, you're always better to go and rent that. So that's a Rayburn rentals for me. So reason being is that that equipment's going to go down in value. You're paying interest on that, and you just can't afford to park it over in the, you know, at the golf course or wherever. So do you need a hydro vac that much? And you might need a mini X.
So our irrigation crews are constantly going from mainline break to mainline break. I don't know the numbers of just one park in specific, but they're just literally going from mainline break to mainline break. So that's when this would really come in handy when you're digging a six-foot hole trying to fix those irrigation repairs. We think it gets in there a lot faster and be able to do the work a lot more efficient. We actually saw that when we had some issues at Elwood with some irrigation there, it would have saved us days worth of work, being able to go in hydro vac, get through the work, and move on to the next project. So we think there's some major efficiencies that could be found instead of guys out there with a shovel.
Okay, so you, you'd have some efficiencies there, and you think you would be implementing that equipment more than 50% of the time?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't be parked 90% of the week?
It would be with our irrigation crews.
Okay. Very good. Golf pump stations. So for you or George, you know, describe to me, there's four pump stations, and these are lakes within the golf course, ponds?
Yeah, James, do you want to answer these? So James is our Assistant Director of Parks and Rec. He oversees a lot of the operations sites of park maintenance, golf. He's actually very familiar with it. He came from the golf side of house and actually helped when some of these were actually put in, so.
Yes, so there's four pump stations. Each golf course has their set golf, their own pump station. They vary, like Mustang has 300 horsepower motors and DFDs and everything, so that they run and operate off of that. But yes, they pump out of the individual ponds, basically, so they're not tied into the city maintenance.
So these are mobile, correct?
They come in on a skid. Everything will come in on a skid and from the.
Set it where you need it, move the water and move it.
We'll just, the quotes we got is to remove the old systems, set the new skid in place, wired in, and you're good to go.
So it'll be permanently affixed to that area?
Yes, it's in a building. They're all in building. And it's, it is set to that pond. And once it's in there, it's in there. It's, you can't.
Okay. Okay. Lighting projects, I'm a fan of, thank you, sir. I think we're getting a good ROI on the lighting projects. I definitely feel like Sam Houston Park looks totally different over there. Changes the neighborhood. I think those are, those are long-lasting impacts as well. I don't know if those are 30-year lights, but they sure look good. And they look like they're going to be fine. I mean, the old lights you had working was like 50-plus years, I think. So they would just sway. The gazebo is probably the one I would try to pick apart. How big is that?
It's about 1,500 square feet. So it's got kind of the main room downstairs and then a couple restrooms off to the side. Again, a lot of the work that we're proposing has to do with kind of the site work because the, what happens is landscape comes right up to the edge of the building, and so we get a lot of water infiltration. So a lot of it would be kind of the site work around it, getting it prepped, putting in a French drain or some sort of waterproofing, and then addressing a lot of the structural issues in that facility with the exposed spalling rebar, things like that.
So we got, we've got a good-looking, large structure. We say the term gazebo, but like I think when I was questioning this item on the. We say the term gazebo, but like I think when I was questioning this item on the, the agenda, I was thinking 20 by 30, 30 by 30, kind of round wood structure to provide shade. You have a 1,500 square foot covered structure, no heating and cooling, right?
There is some, some cooling in there, but it's just a wall unit. So those are some things that we might want to update.
In the downstairs, in the basement?
Yes, sir.
So there's a basement? So it's 1,500 covered plus the basement?
Can we go back to that picture, Stephanie? Yeah, so the upstairs is just an open kind of area that overlooks the park. But the basement is really where we get a lot of the reservations and especially in the winter, because we don't have a whole lot of other reservable spaces. So you can kind of, it's kind of hard to see. The picture on the right kind of shows the, the upper area, but from the, the white trim down, you kind of see in the bottom right picture is the, the basement itself. So you can see kind of the basement sits underneath, the, the top is actually a terrazzo floor. It's an old terrazzo floor, but we're starting to see some of the structural supports on the columns we're seeing issues with. You can see that picture, that's the picture right there is actually the underside of that top floor. So we actually have concrete that's spalling rebar that's exposed. And a lot of that is due to water damage. So, and again, you can kind of see it's, again, this facility is about 75 years old. But a lot of it is due to water infiltration into that space.
So are you proposing to demo the entire structure and then redo the grading plan?
No, what we would want to do is go in and excavate around the structure, put in some sort of drain system to help it flow around, so it's not running up to the edge of the building. And then going in there, addressing the structural issues, addressing some of the cosmetic issues in the basement. Again, we've had a lot of water infiltration, so we're, we're constantly fighting that. But yeah, it would basically be renovating the inside of the basement and addressing the structural and kind of the, the site conditions that caused it.
Well, so my heartburn is that's $260 a square foot for a, you know, an outdoor structure. So I would, I would like, if council is willing to, I, I would like to see this one maybe line item proposed and brought back with less of like an architectural feel, like don't, I don't believe that the city should have to go and hire an architect, hire M E and P engineers, go and get a separate civil, bring, you know, $100,000 worth of plans back to go and find, you know, a $50,000 repair bid. And so like what I would be looking for is, is can we update a couple bathrooms, say 10 grand each? Can we do waterproofing with an area drain around it and, and get this budget where it's, it's more friendly to our appetite?
Yeah, we'd be happy to work with facilities to see kind of what options we want to come back with.
I think that sometimes things like this get mixed in with a good lighting package and it feels like everything, we're just spending money and let's just borrow and, and spend. And, and you've done great on the lighting. And I know that, is this the same manufacturer? Yeah. So I mean, top quality and, and I think we want to see you do your job, continue to put these quality of life things into the public. And if you're borrowing them within your O and M, it's great. I think we want to make sure that we're equally as concerned on a $50,000 component as well as like, are we buying a piece of equipment, you know, that we could rent?
We'd be happy to look at it.
Counsel, other questions on these guys?
No. So the, so what we're going to decide on for the gazebo, you're going to come back with more of a line item deal of, of cost and what we're doing and that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's correct. We'd, we'd circle up with facilities, see kind of what we, we can estimate a little bit more in-house and then bring that back to council.
Yeah, I thought I had three or four items coming off that we were going to try to sharpen our pencil on. Honestly, we really don't. I think it's just the gazebo that we could pull. After getting the additional information on the, the mini X and the hydro vac, I think I see the value in that. And then the pumps, I'm not real sure, what's the life over there?
Life expectancy is 20 years and we're at 24, 25, 27, 28, so.
Okay. Yeah, so counsel, if y'all are good with the direction, I think what we're saying is bring the gazebo back separate. You can work that in with your giving budget probably. And then if you want to do a debt issuance, Mr. Storrs, would we, we'd be bringing this forward with less the gazebo, but everything else as presented?
And we absolutely could do that, Mayor. The other option is, again, all we're doing is noticing to the public that we're going to issue some debt not to exceed an amount, but we can do something lower than that. We've got, you know, a couple months to get that ready. We'll be bringing it back on, on April 8th. In that time, Michael Kishuba and his team can work to get a better estimate. And again, they're going to have to bring these construction awards to you all separately. And if we come in much lower, we can issue less debt. We could, he could have other projects that he might want to, you know, propose that y'all may want to use that additional debt for. Or we could lower the not to exceed amount today. I mean, it's, all you're doing today is saying, we're, we're going to issue some debt not to exceed this amount to do parks projects and then we can do anything there or lower.
Leave it up to council. If you guys want to lower that amount today, that's fine with me. Because I think we've gotten, we've got a good working budget over there. But if you want to keep it in council and then let them bring back a, a better value for that gazebo, we could do that as well.
I think I'm good with it not to exceed, with us having the ability to bring it back down if we need to.
Okay?
Yeah, same.
Okay. You got good direction?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you, sir. Good job out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Mr. Storrs, I'm going to ask on the fleet debt issuance, item 8D.
Yes, sir.
That is the same presentation that was, that all incorporated? Okay.
So Donnie Hooper is here with our next presentation to talk about 4 million that's include, that could be included in this certificate of obligation advertisement that we're looking to do on item 10B. He's going to go over that. Again, the same thing applies. We can, if council decides, they can revise that resolution to not include this, to increase it, decrease it. But again, this is just a notice. And then if we decide to go a different direction between now and then, we're not doing a competitive sell until April 8th. And so it gives us a lot of time if council decides they want to do something different. It's just a not to exceed and we have to say what potentially we would be issuing debt for. So this is the, the kind of the next part of it. On that resolution, right now it's for parks projects and heavy equipment and vehicles and a not to exceed 17 million. And what Donnie is going to go over, Michael went over the first 13 million approximately and Donnie's going to cover what that last $4 million could potentially be used for as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon. So I'm going to take you back a little bit to budget time. We were sitting in this room and we were talking about our overall plan for fleet. And you remember we had $19 million worth of fleet that needed to be replaced. We were trying to figure out a new method, different methods to be able to bring the fleet back into compliance, at least with, with, with operations being efficient. So we had three steps to that. There was one that we would talk about the leasing, which we did during the budget time. And we also said the two items we'd bring back to you would be the fire leasing equipment, which you've already talked about at the last meeting. And then furthermore, in January or February, we would come back with the heavy equipment list because our cash was already expended on the lease side of it. So we would have to find a funding mechanism for that. So that's why we're here today, all as we had pre-planned. Talk a little bit about the city fleet itself. We have a total of 19 million that I mentioned that we needed to replace this year to bring the fleet current. We're not going to be able to hit that and we knew that coming in. So that's why we came up with a longer term plan to do that. We're currently leasing 177 units for general use fleet, what we were calling the white fleet. It's vehicles, pickups, things like that. Those are being ordered, processed. Some of those have come in, some of them have not come in, but we're still working through that process right now. And D and M is doing a really good job on that. As discussed during that time, we would come back in January, February, as I just mentioned, to come talk to you. There are 31 total units in this presentation today. It's about $4 million estimated. We have some good quotes on about 80% of that equipment. There's about 20% of it that we think we're really close on. We're still waiting those final numbers to come in. So you're going to see the number we're going to give you today is around 3.8. We left a little breathing room in there if that number should be a little bit higher than what we're expecting it to be on some of those units. All these items that us discussed today would need that funding mechanisms to take place. Just so you know, the 177 that we're leasing and the 31 today is 208 units total. We have about 800 units altogether in our rolling stock fleet. We have about 1,200 units in our overall fleet, which includes some of the trailers, some of the smaller apparatuses that we have as well. So this is a pretty good portion of our fleet when you add these 31 to that. It's all really about heavy equipment, miscellaneous equipment. I'll start out with solid waste and tell you what's on the list. And, and just so you know, we went back and we took the entire list, that entire 19 million and said, what's the worst of the worst, which are the ones that we have to replace right now? That's what you're going to see on this list today. There's six solid waste side loaders. Those are at $211,000 apiece. All of those are two years past their useful life. In fact, there are 16, so really when you add 25 to that, it's really three years past their useful life. Trash truck is good for about six years and these are running at about nine, as I mentioned. So a little bit past that, we're starting to see that the maintenance costs on those, as we mentioned during budget time, have exceeded the cost, the original cost of that unit. So it's more than past time to replace those. We have one solid waste front loader, you see the picture of that on the right. Those are $416,000 apiece. This one is at its replacement lifecycle to be replaced. It has a seven year lifecycle. It's at seven years, but it also has fire damage, so it's out of service right now. So we need to get that one replaced. We do have some that are on order right now. We have three front loaders that are on order from our previous year's budget that we're awaiting. It takes quite a while to get those manufactured. So it's another reason that today's considerations are important to us because we know that even if we get this approved, we have some timeframe before those trucks will be built and actually delivered to us. We have three side loaders that are in last year's order as well. We have 49 side loaders, just so you know, in our total fleet. Those service all the residential customers and some commercial routes as well. Pretty critical that we get those replaced. That is a grapple loader, better known to us. We call those our knuckle boom trucks that you talk about so much, that we talk to you so much about. We have one of those plus a forklift that finishes off the solid waste list. We have a total of 12 knuckle booms in our fleet. This one's definitely need to be replaced. It's well past its lifecycle, I think three years on that one. And I'm sorry that I didn't put the number on there. Some of the other items that we have in here in the miscellaneous side, there's 245,000 in there for seven police motorcycles. These are units that are all past their useful life as well. They're two years past that, in fact. We had some trouble last year being able to have the funds to purchase those. We pushed them out. Now we have those seven that are in here now. They're, they're going to be switching these seven over to a different style of motorcycle as well. We found one that's a little bit less expensive overall, has better safety features. And there were many discussions that went and took place between myself and the command staff and the police department and what they wanted. And we're able to accommodate that if we can get this through today as well. For the street department, we have about 896,000 of that. That includes a six yard dump truck, two of the 15 foot mowers that they use for maintenance responsibilities. There's two front loaders that are $187,000 each. You can see the picture of the front loader on the right there. That's for their day-to-day operations. And then a motor grader that's about $350,000, which is critical for a lot of things. That motor grader is not only critical for street maintenance, for alley maintenance, we'll use those as well for fire protection when we're called out to assist the fire department with wildland fires. And then we also have to finish it off, our parks and golf equipment. There's about $702,000 there. That includes a couple of grooming mowers that are three years past their useful life. Front loader that's five years past its useful life, just as the same front loader that the street department has or similar. Brush chipper that's three years past its useful life. 16 foot mower that's two years past, a four, a four wheel drive tractor. It's a Kubota tractor like on the bottom right there. That's five years past its life and a greens mower and then two rough mowers as well. So as you can see from those and the total of all these units, it's not that many units, only 31. And it's 3.863 is the estimated cost on that. We think there may be a little bit of inflated number that comes in when we actually get the quotes on some of the final equipment. But as Laura mentioned, we can always go down. I mean, if it's 3.7 when we get it all finished, then you can always take that number down to whatever it is. This is the equipment that, I mean, it's not to say that we don't have other equipment that needs to be replaced because we do. This is just all part of that overall plan that we were looking at for six years to get everything back on track. And I think we've, we've done well with the leasing side. And now it's the heavy equipment's turn to, to get its, get in the, the mix with all of it as well. So that's all I had for you and I can try to answer any questions or I can give it back to Laura and Stephen and they can, they can talk about that side of it as well.
I think before we jump back over, I, I have a few questions, but I will ask if council has anything else.
I don't have anything right now.
Total sales revenues from existing equipment. So we've got all this equipment that's rolling off. What would you expect in revenues coming back if we sell some of these trash trucks to private entities or smaller municipalities?
Don't know what the total of that would be. We could go back and run some estimates on that. I can, just for an example, I can tell you, you know, a trash truck, $211,000 to purchase a new one. We bought those for around $150,000 and you're probably going to get $4,000 to $5,000 for each of those trucks.
Did you say 40?
Four or 5,000. Yeah.
So you're going to get 4,000 for the trash truck used?
For each trash truck, if you auctioned it off, is that, if that's the question you're asking?
Yeah, that's the question I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've seen even less than that in some cases, depending on what the condition of the truck is.
We use third party auction company, we hand it to them, they just give us a check and it goes back to the general fund, I guess?
I'm assuming that's correct. Yeah.
Okay. And you wouldn't expect much?
No. Most of these, in fact, you know, the, all the lists that I've given you is so far past its useful life that we're just not expecting much of return on that, on the salvage value. We build that into our lease rates and we kind of have a pretty good idea before we even get to the end of its life, what it's going to be. But since we've exceeded it, it's, it's really just gone beyond that, if that makes sense. We, we may calculate that we're going to get $7,000 for those trash trucks at the end of its life. And now that it's gone three years past, we know we're going to get a lot less than that.
So a question on like the, the past year, you know, past its useful life, that recommendation. So if we had something that's one year past recommended use, two years past recommended use, are you doing like singular evaluations of these and you're like, this is rough, we need a new one? Or, you know, it may be in good shape, but it's on your list because it's two years, three years past its life?
I think, I think the best answer I can give you to that is at one point in time, we were, we were making replacements whenever the replacements were due. Through time, as inflation and everything else, as we mentioned in budget time, has, has caused this equipment to go up in price. We've just been unable to keep up with replacing them. Instead, we've had to stretch out the life of the vehicles instead of replacing that replacement time.
Any wisdom in pulling anything that's two years or less past its useful life off of this and trying to get this budget down?
I don't, I don't think that would be wise. I mean, we're spending so much money on maintenance that it's, it's costing more to operate them than they're worth.
Okay. Councilman Sherlin?
A question, Donnie. I was just wondering on, on these machinery you're talking about here. If, you know, it sort of goes back to what Cole was saying. We have expected life and we have actual life. And sometime I thought, you know, I don't know, I don't think we should ever go by seven years or 10 years. I think it should be evaluated on a yearly basis. Because we've got good mechanics and they could evaluate that piece of equipment. It may come up earlier, it may come up later. But the thing I'm going to get to here, have we been delinquent in keeping up with this? Or we just don't budget it? And so now we've got all these items at the same time? Is that, is that where the problem is?
It's a combination of a lot of things. I would say that just the available funding that we've been given year in and year out with, has not kept up with inflation. That's one piece of it. To address what you just asked about, pieces of equipment and evaluating what their worth is, we do that every year. But, but the things that we have like trash trucks that run every single day, all day long, we kind of know when that time is going to come. You could probably go through all the models that are a year out right now and look at them and say, yeah, they need to be replaced. But there are other items that do not get extreme heavy daily use that we do evaluate them and push them past their useful life.
So I guess I'm still wondering if this came up, if it's three years overdue. Was it not on a budget three years ago? Or was it on a budget and it was voted off or? These are the questions, because it seems like we're inheriting a lot of stuff that's very old. And I'm trying to figure out why we're, we're inheriting. I mean, we've inherited an infrastructure that's in pretty bad shape. We've inherited a wastewater plant that are in bad shape. I just want to know, were we not budgeting properly to cover these items at the time? And have we just let it slide by and do other things with that money? Do you know?
To answer the last part of that question, no. We're not doing other things with that money. I'm going to, there's more people, there's other people in the room that are a lot, have been here a lot longer than I have. But I can tell you historically, I asked the same questions when I came on in 2018 because the problem was, was existent then as well. What I've learned historically, and Laura's been here a lot longer than me and she can probably either, either expound on this, make it, make more sense than what I'm going to say. But there were times where we would, there was money that was pulled out of fleet, this is years ago, to make up the budget in some other area. And what that caused us to do is just say, for example, we had pickup trucks that had a life expectancy of five years. Said, okay, well then we're going to extend the life of those to eight and that'll be our new schedule. Those pickup trucks now go eight years. So they take that money, put it back into the budget in other place where it was needed to meet budget. That has kind of happened throughout the years and I'll, I'll let Laura kind of talk about that a little bit too. years and I'll, I'll let Laura kind of talk about that a little bit too.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, there's several things that have played into it over the years, but I do think due to budget constraints, councils have had to make decisions for decades now and on what were top priorities. And I think that it has historically been utilized, just cash funding all of our fleet replacement. And I think if you go a long ways back, that did work. But as our budgets continued to get tighter, as the tax rate got tighter, as state legislation changed, I think it put more pressure on the general fund. And in order to keep up with the cost of inflation of everything else going on, more and more got pulled out of the fleet replacement budget, especially the general fund. I think that's where the biggest constraints have been. I think water and sewer and drainage and airport, you know, they've all kept up quite a bit. But I think, you know, a classic example is looking at the fire trucks. I mean, we had fire trucks that cost, you know, a few years ago, maybe 800,000. And now they're 1.3 million dollars, 1.5 million dollars. So I mean, the price of all of the vehicles and equipment have, has gone up drastically. But I also think the general fund budget has not grown proportionally with that over time. And councils have not been willing up to this point to maybe do debt issuances, to look at leasing options. And so that's why this summer, we, we were like that we can't make this work anymore. It's not working. The fleet's gotten so old. I did want to point out in Donnie's presentation, that 19 million that needs to be replaced does not include any of the fire apparatus.
That's right.
That's separate and apart. And so I think it was just a accumulation of, of years of challenges in the general fund budget.
Councilman Sherlin, can I add something to that too? I think, I think she nailed it. And I was, what I was going to say next was, that's why we're here. That's why we started this in budget. At some point in time, you have to stop that bleeding and somebody has to say, okay, we've, we've got some problems. We've got to get these addressed. And that's, that's really what we're trying to do is stop that.
I, I agree with the concept we got here. I totally agree. Now, a question I got for Laura. When we decide to change the budget, does that come back before the people? Or do we just do that and, or?
So, yes, absolutely. So as you know, state law changed a few years ago, which means that anything above a three and a half percent increase on the O and M side of the tax rate has to go to the voters. Everything we're discussing and the constraints on the general fund budget have been trying to keep that below that voter approval of a tax rate increase. What you've got here in front of you, and Stephen can get up and show you the numbers, but I'll just give you the preview of it. To do this 4 million, we're looking at seven years of about 580,000 per year. The reason we brought the 4 million, there's way more than 4 million that's really in need of, of replacement right now. We can manage that within our existing budget. Now, that will be a question we'll talk about this summer with council as well. But that was kind of the target that Donnie and I were working with and with our financial advisors is, we're not saying that this needs to go an additional tax rate. This is what we can squeeze in, and that's why the dollar amount, 4 million out of 19 million, that's why we're bringing the 4 million this year because the 580,000 annual debt service payment, we can incorporate that through with the lease, with the fire apparatus, and really make this work if that's what council chooses to do.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, a part of it, the other part was when we take a change in our budget.
Yes.
And we decide I need to take some stuff from Donnie's deal.
Oh, yes.
Do we go back to the public and let them know?
That is, those were all decisions made by prior mayors and city council members. And so there was, there were discussions in open meetings during budget workshops. We did have the same public hearings that are posted when the budget and the tax rate get approved. But it's not anything that went to a true vote, if that's what you're asking.
And I think a lot of that occurred, Mr. Sherlin, during 2011, 12, somewhere during that economic downturn that was really hard on everybody. That's when a lot of that started. Just trying to juggle, figure out how to ever make priorities work.
And, and I think to that point, it started back then, we had to lower kind of what was going to the fleet. And then every year since then, we have increased the amount that has gone to the fleet, but it has not cut, kept up with the replacement needs and inflation as well. So we've just gotten further and further behind.
The only thing I think if we would communicate to the citizens what we're doing, they would be more apt to be for a tax increase because they're seeing we're having to steal from Adam to pay Paul. But nobody really knows that because we don't put it out there. So
Yes, sir.
That's my last thing here.
Okay.
I'm good.
In comparison to, thank you, the amount that would be spent on this, is this one of the largest investments into the fleet that we've seen?
So we annually, well, if you want to, between, between the fire truck apparatus, this and the leasing, by far, it's probably the biggest investment we've seen to help. It does not fix it, but it helps get us on track where we think we can keep what we've got semi-maintained to make sure we don't start impacting services. I think that's where we're getting with the fleet is that we're going to start impacting services if we, if we don't start making some big changes. So if that answers your question, a combination of this, the fire truck apparatus and the leasing absolutely would be.
And I would say, I don't know the dollar amount answer to that, but I know the number of fleet units, both in the lease, fire, and this portion of it is definitely the most since I've been here and probably the most in a long time that we've been able to do in one year.
Okay. So Mrs. Storrs, to Councilman Sherlin's request, can you define for me budget amendment? Like what I hear him saying may be a policy issue?
Okay.
Like we as, we as a council may want to put forward a policy if it's not already in place. So if we approve something or if an existing budget that you have has been there, and, and it's not during a budget work session, but it's during the middle of the year, we're going to take, say, a half a million dollars out of your fleet budget because we are reprioritizing that. Could we have a policy in place that requires a public notice of that, acknowledging where the money is being reduced, not just where the money is going?
We could absolutely look at bringing something back. It's not within our existing policies, but if council would like to make a change. And we can always, if you want to bring it in a more formal action, absolutely, we could do that.
I think maybe what I'm hearing Councilman Sherlin say, you can speak to it better, but like.
Correct. I mean, you hit the nail on the head.
What you're looking for is, is more of a working acknowledgement of any kind. So, you know, let's say fire apparatus is prioritized and future councils are going to pull money out of fire. There's an appropriate time to re-categorize and prioritize that during budget work session. And I think that's when our staff as well as public are paying attention. Then I think after it goes out and we start issuing monies, I think sometimes there's a tendency for the public not to realize, maybe we removed money from fleet or from fire in order to go to a different cause. We may acknowledge that expenditure and say it's now budgeted, but how did we get it in the budget if we were balanced before? So if that's something that you and Mr. McWilliams could put together, I think this council would entertain looking at that. Because that might be a really good policy for future councils to, to try to adhere to. Also would allow staff a little bit more comfort in knowing you're building your budget to work on for, you know, really years and years as you have to look out and you're gauging and evaluating equipment. And then at any given whim, you know, council may take some of that money and put it over to another cause or another item. And, and you're now kind of in a knee jerk position. So it would give them a little bit more time to evaluate like where we pull money from. I would think. I, I would like the discussion. So is that something that's clearly stated? And Councilman Sherlin, you want to add?
You're good, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, we can, let us brainstorm through what that might look like. As a reminder, now on the leasing, those take effect immediately. But on the fire apparatus and on this heavy equipment, it would be affecting future budgets. But I think, I think we could come up with a policy that maybe helps you all determine what your intentions are when you approve items like this. And Brian and I, I think we can come up with something to bring back to council on that.
Actually, I mean, what I'd like to hear is, we're taking it from his budget movement in here, but I'd like to hear him argue his point too.
And I think that, I, I don't want to be misleading either. I think that those discussions did take place during those budget hearings. I wasn't here, but that's generally where we have those conversations. So I'm sure that they took place during those budget hearings.
But in this case, general fund has a set dollar amount each year in total that they pay to the fleet for replacement, for saving up for replacement of vehicles. And so what we would do is take a portion of that that they're already paying and instead use it to pay this debt service to get more replaced than what that cash funding is, if that makes sense.
It does. And so I would just, thank you, Mrs. Storrs. I think that's very helpful. I would, I would just remind council, we have a working budget for this reason. This council has seen a lot of wisdom in trying to work and live within your means. We have roughly $3 million in a working budget right now. So as you're proposing these things, I think we still need to think in the terms of pulling out of our working budget for those ongoing expenditures or one-time expenditures, depending on what we're, we're buying. And try and never to move everything over to an INS concept to where then it allows for that overall revenue to increase, even though you didn't have to take it back to the, to the taxpayer. So, so living within the means and anytime we need to go back to our taxpayer and show them, you know, this is needed and we, we need to do this and here's how we're doing it. I know y'all would show that, but it can get lost in the wash if we're not careful. So I, I like the direction we're going and I think the policy would be something we'd like to see.
Yes, sir. We can work.
Okay. Mr. Adams, did you need to come back in on that 4 million? Do you feel like you have anything else to add?
Let me, let me just clarify. So the, the resolution calls for not to exceed 17 million dollars and it includes every, every item that we've discussed today. Is that correct? And then over the next few months, we could lower that?
I think let's look at it again. So we, we're putting that back up. So let's go to page 26, I think. We're on 27.
Yes. This is the combined one. And I apologize, I know that's small.
Okay. So on 26, the reason I kind of wanted to start there is because I think we can understand that. Go to 27. Let me see if we can understand that one. How's that broken out, Mr. Adams?
That is broken out by the useful life for each project or each line item. So for example, on the left is the seven year projects, then the 10 year, then the 20 year, then the 25 year, and the 30 year.
So council, you see, let's, let's start with the far left-hand side, 4 million to go to what we just discussed. So assuming we're not going to pull back on any of those, Mr. Hooper may bring you a request of 3.8 million to go and get all of that equipment. We would have, we would have approved, pre-approved a debt issuance notice, not the debt issuance, but just the notice.
Correct.
Letting the public know that we are intending to borrow some amount of money. And then you'd pay 4.5 million dollars, including interest, if you funded the four, the full 4 million.
Correct.
Now, does any of this speak to INS, O and M, Mr. Adams? Or is that all to be determined?
No.
Okay.
It does not speak to any of that.
Great. I think that was probably the, the point that I, I found some comfort in. So can we go back to page 26? So really on this summary, cost of issuance may change a little bit depending on what the amount is. The 4 million we've discussed, the lighting projects, I'm unclear on those. I see lighting projects down at the 2.5 million. That's what I understood for the parks. What is the, the 4.6 million in the 10 years? Is that parks as well, Mr. Kishuba?
Yes. There's two different types of lights that they're proposing to put in. One has a 10-year warranty period. And that, that makes up the ones at just under 4.7 million. And then the other ones are bigger, I think, lights and they have a 25-year warranty period. And that's coming in at the two and a half million.
And all of those light projects were within given budget from Mr. Kishuba's Parks Department?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Golf is budgeted within their budget? Or we would expect the golf pump stations to be an additional cost?
No, it's, it's all within parks' existing budget. Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions on any of this? I mean, the parking lots are the only one we really haven't talked about. I mean, council, if you wanted to, to push pause and move forward, what I hear staff really pushing for is everything on this list. But I, I haven't really heard a great push for the park, or I mean, I'm sorry, for the parking lots. Do, are we, are we at a place where we would, we feel like we need to pull this, this amount down for this notice? Or are you good moving forward with this amount and giving staff a little bit more time to justify the, the value?
And I did want to add on the parking lot projects, we have encountered a lot of public safety issues at our parks when we have our athletic events on the weekends due to the lack of parking. I think this is something that probably a police chief could get up and speak about as well, that it, and I think we could also have some of our partners in the community that would come forward and speak about it as well. I think it's a huge need out there right now. And actually, we had hoped to get them online before the big heavy season this year. I don't think it's going to happen at this point. So we're trying to work with those partners on how do we survive another year without this additional parking. And so I do know this is a high priority from our parks and rec department.
Very good.
One clarification. The seven year equipment, there is a portion of that that is in parks.
Correct.
So the 3.8 is not parks. There's a little bit that is parks.
Okay. Yes, I, I think we're, we're good. So council, any other direction here before we move forward? And we're going to go ahead and bring up item 10. Let me look here and see which one it is unless you know which one.
It'll be 10A and 10B.
Yeah.
So we're going to pull up 10A and 10B because our five o'clock deadline is getting closer. And we, we can take a vote on both of those non-consent items here in the middle of this. But are we, can I move us out of item 8D? Do we have anything further on the fleet debt issuance from anyone on council?
Can I ask a couple more questions with, for Donnie, if you could? So you're, you're proposing six solid waste side loaders. I guess that's what we use in the alleys?
Correct. We use this for residential and commercial. There are some commercial routes.
How many of those total do we have in the fleet?
49.
And what are the life ages on the other 43?
Oh, they're, they, they vary from one year to all the way up to six, seven years.
So I'm guessing to continue to keep up in the not just too distant future, we're going to be having to look, if we're going to be on a replacement schedule in a certain number of years.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
You're going to be back in, it's probably going to be before seven years.
Yes, that's correct. And that's part of the overall plan that we put together with the leasing side of it and this side of it as well, that we could try to get, it's going to take us about six years to get back on track where we would be on the replacement schedule and moving. Of course, there's some variables in there too. You're going to see inflation between now and then too. So there's going to have to be some adjustments. We know that this plan, when Laura and I were talking together about it, will hold together for a couple of years and we're going to have to relook at all the prices again and see where they're at. Trash trucks themselves were $145,000 five years ago. You know, they're 211 now. $411,000 for a front loader, those were about 325 just two years ago. So, you know, we're going to have to look at all those things and make the adjustments as we go. But this is just the first poke at trying to get back on track.
And the seven motorcycles, is that the entire fleet, the motorcycle fleet?
No, it is not.
How many?
Uh, 20, how many? 12 total.
Okay.
It's a good portion of it. Yeah, they snuck one in.
But this will replace half of them and then?
Yeah. Yeah. And that was the, that's the plan is that every, every two years, they would rotate and they would, we would be replacing either half of those every year or every two years replace them. And we need to get back on track with that as well.
Thank you.
Anything else, council?
Yeah. So Laura, to be clear, I think I heard you say this, and I just want to verify. So we're in this position because we've had money in the budgets previously to go towards replacing vehicles. But is it?
But not enough.
But not enough. So this has just been kind of, this can's been just kicked down the road? I mean, like there wasn't an appetite to replace these? So we're in a tough spot of needing 19 million or whatever to, to replace all these vehicles. It seems like we're doing, you know, police and fire, we're doing heavy equipment. Just nothing's been done? Is that kind of?
We have done some things, and Donnie can speak to this. This past year, I want to say we, we purchased one or two vehicles with the replacement. Do you remember what was replaced this past year? Off the top of your head?
One or two?
Yeah. I mean, some big pieces. I may be wrong on that. There were some expensive pieces, I think. And then everything else got pushed out further.
Yeah.
In last year, we had about 5 million to work with, if I remember correctly.
So there were some other issues that came up in there as well that I didn't mention earlier. So when COVID happened and there was a part chain supply issues and all that, there were some like police vehicles, for example, that we, we ordered 50 of those and it took three years, three years to even receive those, which then put us behind because we were running old units. And so that had a lot to do with this as well. And there have been just a lot of challenges with inflation. have been, um, just a lot of challenges with inflation that, that everyone was aware of. But I mean, you start looking at the numbers, that's why we got together and said we've, we've gotta do something now. We can't let, we can't kick the can down the road again. I don't want to be known for that. I don't think any of us do. So at some point in time, you have to stop the bleeding and that's what this whole plan was about.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good plan, but it just looks like, you know, we're in a spot. I mean, when was the last time we were on schedule for replacement of vehicles? Is that a fair question? Probably before you.
Probably before two, I would say probably sometime 42010.
I would say 2009 or 10 would be the, would be about.
So that's back near.
And we've actively been getting it behind each year. And I think it's just gotten further and further behind.
Well, and, and let me, let me clarify that, too. So when they extended the life, that was part of the plan and that was management decisions, working with council. I mean, all the, all, all of it was transparent.
Sure.
But we've got to extend the life of our vehicles out a couple of more years, get a couple more years of life out of them because we can't, we don't have the money to replace them right now. So when you look at the fleet of however many vehicles we had back then, you know, we've got 800 now. There were probably 650 or so, 700 back then, I guess. Uh, and I could look at it and probably get some accurate numbers. It just compounded over time.
Sure.
Uh, that, that's really.
We're just never able to get ahead. And we're still not.
Once we got behind, it was, it's always difficult to get back ahead, especially in, in this arena. It's really difficult to ask for more and get more.
Even with this big bite, we're still, we're still behind.
Yes.
And I don't think there's ever been a moment that we weren't aware of it or previous administrations or previous management wasn't aware of it. It's just.
And the longer you keep those vehicles, the more repairs there are and the cost of auto parts alone has gone through the roof. So as we're spending more on auto parts and repairs, it's giving us less and less money to put towards the actual replacement. And so it's just this cycle that we've got into that, um, has been very hard for us to try to find a way out. And it feels like this is the first real step into really trying to get out of that.
That's what feels good about it, is we were, we were asked to come up with solutions and we're trying to present solutions. We've had a receptive audience during the budget period with you guys and, and that feels good to us to be able to maybe finally get back on track with some of that.
Yeah, I would agree. It's, I mean, it's a good plan. I think it's a necessary plan. We're going to have to move forward or just keep passing this down further and further. So, sir.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the discussion on it from council because even though we're pushing forward, it's a good plan, concept works and you need it. Uh, I still want to drill in on a $400,000 project, see if it can be $200,000. So, um, thank you for that. I'm going to move us into item 10A. Guys, if you'll get to that point in your agenda. Um, we have a consideration of an ordinance number 8180. We really don't need any presentation on this, Mrs. Stores?
This is actually, um, this is related to the fire apparatus that we have talked for weeks about.
You have a presentation for it?
Yes.
Because we can do it. I just, I'm trying to be mindful of your time.
No, it's fine because I think this has a lot to do with a lot of the other discussion that we've had.
Yeah, well, if you'll go ahead and take it.
Because when, this, this is an aside, every client we have has been whipsawed by the restriction in funding and the huge inflation on vehicles, which is higher than the regular inflation. So anyway, so this is PPFCOs for the fire equipment. And recall, without doing a PPFCO that we bid, it would have been a vendor lease. And vendor leases are, have been used for a lot of, um, equipment rolling of, over the years for many cities. If you do a lease, it must be on the I, on the ONM side. You cannot put a lease on the INS side. So what we try to do here is reduce the cost of those leases by doing a PPFCO. And in doing that, Laura mentioned the cost versus what we received a bid for 3.27% this morning, we took bids on these. Compared to the lease, we saved 2.3 million in debt service, which is present value $1 million, which is about 7.8% of the entire equipment that we purchased, or 475,000 a year out of your annual ONM budget. Um, we do have a 38 call redemption. This is a, how many bids you received on this? We received 12 bids from companies all over the place. The winning bid is BOK Financial, which is Bank of Oklahoma, and they're waiting for me to text them that you awarded, that's why we moved this up. Um, of 3.2%. And we were really happy to get this many bids. This is well below the cost of a lease that you would have signed. And so we're very happy with this. Um, this is the debt service payments that we have on this and it, you see that 2.6 million at the, at the back end, that's because of the guaranteed purchase price that we have from the vendor. Just to remind you about that. And other than that, um, we do recommend that the city award the 12,355,000 Public Property Finance Contractual Obligation Series 25 to BOK Financial Securities.
Very good. Um, before we take a motion on that, I'd like to clarify my statement. I, I misunderstood. Uh, the reason I wasn't asking for a presentation on that one was I thought this was, uh, pursuant to a notice to the public that we would vote on this in the future.
That.
So that got a little bit unclear, I think, for our public. So item 10A is a previous presentation that we've gone through with both of our chiefs on several things. And so I, I think that's great that you, uh, you gave the presentation again so the public can hear it. So we are awarding the 12.3 million dollars, uh, in this vote, correct?
Did I go out of line?
No, I think you're fine. That is item 10A.
Exactly.
Yep. So when we worked out of order, I think, uh, we may have confused the conversation. I just want to clarify it for anybody who's watching. Um, council would entertain a motion on item 10A, please?
I move to adopt ordinance 8180 as presented in the agenda.
Take it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
Yeah, let me just ask, I'm going to say this. So we got a much favorable, much more favorable rate than what we thought.
Yes, that is correct. So all the presentations, um, the presentation from last week that Stephen did, we were estimating a 3.8% interest rate. And as you can see, it came in, um, under 3.3%. So this was great. And I've heard the rates have even gone up already today. So we, we went out at the right time and are very pleased that this many groups were interested in our debt. Um, and again, we got our AAA rating reaffirmed. And I think that, um, is a reason that we had so many interests, so much interest in it and got that lower rate. So we, I mean, we're saving millions here.
Yeah, that's good.
This is huge.
It's our, goes to our bond rating.
That's correct. Yes. Yeah, that has a lot to do with it.
And what, what did we expect? Because we looked at the, we looked at the leasing arrangement.
We did, yes.
And then we looked at issuing the debt. And then what was the interest rate on the, the leasing?
It was 4.79%.
Okay, so you, and you said that's?
It's about, it's, it was a little bit over $2 million more over the life of this issuance.
We have to go through the leasing.
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on item 10A. Item 10B, are you back up on this one, sir? Or would you like me to hand it over to Mrs. Stores?
Yeah, this.
This is what we've already been discussing.
Okay. So Mrs. Stores, walk us into this one.
I will.
Is this the notice?
This is the notice. And I apologize on that. 10A was very pressing to get it approved before, um, close of business if possible, because, um, we had a lot of people interested in that and wanted to make sure we were a good partner in getting that approved. So really do appreciate that. 10B is what we went into a thorough discussion with Parks and Rec and also with fleet. What 10B is, it's just a resolution that we would advertise two consecutive Fridays in a row. It would be this coming Friday and then the following Friday, to let the public know that we're planning or we're looking to potentially issue up to 17 million dollars in certificates of obligation for Parks and Rec projects and for various, um, heavy equipment and vehicles, um, for our fleet operations. And, um, we'll also post it on our city website. It informs the public. If they would like to comment on it, um, council's going to consider it on April 8th. So on April 8th, we would do a competitive sell. And between now and then, we will figure out exactly how much we want to take to issue for bonds. So if we come back and, and the Memorial Park gazebo project, we want to hold off on it, we would just not issue that debt for it. Or if it came in a little bit lower, we would issue less debt. So it's just not to exceed 17 million. It's there or below and we would look at that on April 8th. And this is just a state law requirement to make sure our citizens are informed and aware if they want to come out and, and discuss it.
Very good. Questions, council, for Mrs. Stores? No? Okay. Ask for a motion.
Move to adopt resolution number 021125-3 as presented.
Take it.
Motion and a second on item 10V, 10B. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, 10B passes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Um, we are going to jump back over to, uh, 8E. And I think we'll probably push through the rest of discussion, then we'll take a recess. So hang in there with us. Um, council, everybody okay with that? Or does anybody need a recess?
We're skipping 8E, correct?
We are going to skip 8E. I would like to say, because Mrs. Mendoza is here, um, that we will take into consideration, I've read through, um, what you've written. Now, I haven't seen necessarily because I was expecting a presentation. So let's see how comparable those are, if we're going down the same, the same road, same direction. Uh, the preservation of those civil rights and liberties of your digital footprint in addition to, uh, your physical self. And so I think you've captured it pretty well. Uh, I know you've got some additional things in there that, you know, legal may say, well, that's, that's not within this or that. So we'll evaluate all that. And then, um, I would ask for, um, input from you. So I, as long as you're getting that, then I think it's great. You're working directly with staff. Uh, if two weeks go by and you're not getting that input because you've put forward this document, I'd ask that you reach out to one of us so we can make sure that staff is continuing to work with our public on this item. Okay. Um, item 8E, I think we will go ahead and pull off for the rest of that discussion, move forward into item 8F. Um, so this is Councilman Simpson. Um, and, and so the ability to televise all public meetings at the new city hall. Councilman Simpson, you put forward a very simple request. Is there anything you would like to elaborate on?
No, I just may be seeing what our capabilities would be in, in being able to do that.
Yeah, so, uh, the, the design of city hall, the new city hall was with that in mind. We do not have the ability to stream from every single conference room that we have. There's a lot of internal conference rooms. It'll be for the departments. The public-facing conference rooms, though, were built in a way that there's a, a big, large conference room on the main floor that will seat, if you have classroom style, somewhere around 50. Uh, if you have, uh, like in the council chamber, just open chairs, it can seat 75 to 100 in there probably if you put them on the walls. Almost every meeting we have, except for a council meeting, that's a public meeting, will be held in that room. And it does have the ability to stream from there. There are two other meeting rooms that sit right behind that, can be used for an executive session-style room. One of those seats like eight, one of them seats 12. And they're just behind that, that main room. So that'll be the biggest room that's used for, uh, public meetings. We'll have our, um, civil service, uh, meetings in there as well as board meetings, et cetera. There's also another room, there's four total meeting rooms that are public on the first floor. One of those will be used for our orientations. It'll be used for public bid openings. It does not have the ability to stream there. Uh, and then, of course, on the second floor, we have one, uh, public meeting room that we can use. Other than the internal rooms, it does not have the ability to stream, but it will not be used for board meetings, et cetera. And then you have the council chamber that has the ability to stream. You also have the council workroom that sits right behind that, that can seat quite a few in there, that has the ability to stream. So if we wanted to have budget hearings and things like that in that room, we could do that as well. So there's a total of three, uh, large rooms that have the ability to stream and broadcast. Uh, they have the audio capabilities in there as well. They have confidence monitors for those that are, uh, on a board or whatever they are, so they can see what's on the agenda packets, et cetera, and plenty of room for the public to be in there. So although we don't have them in every single room, the rooms that we will utilize as public meeting space for, um, just go down the list of all the different board meetings, CAC, anything we have like that, will be in a place where we can stream them. And I hope that answers your question.
Well, then I guess my next question is, what is our plan and how do people access it? And how, I mean, if we have that capability?
Yes, sir.
Are we, is that, is that our plan? And how will people be able to?
We have that plan. And so everyone that is, Stephanie has been in conversation with anyone that has a board, uh, that meets at city hall, she could speak to that. So those are, those that have the ability to be scheduled and they're coordinating all those schedules so that we don't have any overlapping meetings and that they can take place. The other, uh, thing that I left out, too, is on the first floor, uh, we have the ability to lock down that first floor. So if we have evening meetings, which we do sometimes, that the access to the rest of the building will be completely closed off and no one can go wander around the second, third floor and look around. So, uh, design with that in mind. But Stephanie could speak further. Uh, I know we're scheduling them now and we have that in our system already. So she's already taken, um, and, and juggling those meetings around. It's quite a, quite a dance for her.
We are getting those meetings set up. Now, the question that I think you have that, um, we may need to discuss or talk about a little further is how the public would see those meetings. We haven't talked about streaming all of those meetings, but we've got that capability. And so we're looking at what that would look like specifically in that big conference room on the first floor, Councilmember Simpson. Um, and then that would likely, and, and I'm, I'm going to defer to IT here, so may have to change my, my answer, but that would likely go through our solution that we use that streams our council meetings. And we would just send our agendas through to that, um, organization and they would know to stream those at those times.
Is that City Plus that handles that or?
Um, on this, it's called Swagit. It's a Granicus product and, um, we schedule our meetings through them and, um, we send them an agenda ahead of time. And then when you go on our website, um, that is also, and I can't speak directly to how this works, but Swagit helps us link through to our YouTube, so our city YouTube that plays the council meetings. Um, but Swagit also links into our website. So when you go to amarillo.gov and you click on that, view city council meetings, that interface right there is Swagit. And so it would likely be that they may have some other tabs there where you could view live an AMW advisory board or a planning and zoning commission. And so we'll be doing a little more research into how to provide that to, to our community, how to get that to them in the end. Um, but we definitely are looking down that path and looking down a plan for how that would work.
Councilman, I might add, too, uh, that we, Jerry and I are already evaluating to, we know that this, this plan has to be, have a little fluid, fluidity to it. We're, or we have to be able to evaluate once we get in there if it's working or not. We've already evaluated where we would need that technology, if we need to do that and what it would take. I mean, we were talking about the video system, the streaming service and also the audio capability. So if we see at some point in time that it's not working, uh, at the very beginning, we have other space that we can have the smaller meetings in that we could add that technology. We just didn't want to spend the money upfront when we didn't feel like we had the need for that, the way that it's set up now.
But would you say that a, a, a goal of televising all board members, uh, all board meetings is a achievable goal?
Yes.
I believe it would be, yes, sir.
And I know it's going to take a while to work out the bugs.
But I think it's something we can definitely get to.
Yes.
And particularly, you know, and when, when you look at the council meetings, there's ways where if you just want to look at a particular, uh, item, you don't want to look through the whole thing. I think you could, I mean, you know, all those things, I think, just make it easier for, for people to access, particularly not only the whole meeting, but if they want to see a particular discussion.
Sure. And I can tell you this, we were testing some of the video system yesterday and today. Uh, it's pretty impressive compared to what we have here. So I think everybody's going to be really pleased with that. Um, hand tilt zoom cameras that will make our presentations a little bit better and, and a little more clarity when they're being broadcast as well. So, uh, we all love that piece of it. And we're going to actually have a few, uh, mock meetings before we get to the 25th, so we can make sure that our technology's working. And we'll do the same. Stephanie and I have talked about that, doing the same with the first floor meeting rooms and making sure that everything, before we go live, that we have meetings in them are working properly.
Councilmember Simpson, we're also going to look, maybe a next phase is the Sims building, because we do have some boards that have decided to move over to Sims versus city hall. So we may look at equipping those conference rooms or in the meantime, schedule everything in city hall until we can sort that piece out.
Okay.
Because we do have 50-plus boards and lots of scheduling conflicts.
Got it. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on that one? So curious from council. Um, council, would you want to look at something that's a policy initiative that requires, uh, live stream and, and, um, forward-facing of all meetings, say, above the board level? So if we call a meeting with AEDC, we're going to have a working session, maybe it's not streamed and you can't watch it, but you wanted to come to it. Um, this would be a policy initiative that would, you know, maybe limit our venue temporarily, but I think we've got plenty of venue now. Uh, but for future councils coming in, uh, they wouldn't have to worry, well, do I want to stream this or do I not? There would always be a requirement so that we can continue to engage. Uh, any negatives on that, council?
I think we've got to look at, uh, capabilities of what it would cost. Uh, what you're saying is some of the rooms we would have to equip to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct. You'd have to put the stream, uh, equipment in there. You would also have to put an audio system there. And you also have to think about this, too. You have to have someone to operate it. And we can't just go in there and flip a switch and everything come on and be great. You have to, so we don't want to stretch OE, OEI out to where they can't, um, they can't be every place at, you know, at, at one time. So we have to think about the logistics of that. And that's why we were trying to get it all centralized.
So I, I hear where you're coming from, and I like the goal that Councilmember Simpson's putting forward. So as we have available venue with that, and, and we can deliver on that, I think what I'm speaking more to is like budget workshop, council session, work session, anything like that, where sometimes we don't stream. And it can be in different locations. We'd limit ourselves to those venues where the, the streaming's already available. We would be, I would be asking counsel if you'd like to move forward with a policy initiative that would require that for future meetings.
I think that'd be good.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So I think either Mrs. Stores or Deputy, if you guys could work on maybe that policy initiative.
Yes, we can work on that.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. I would like to go one more. Anything further on eight F? No? Okay, I'm going to move us into eight G. That is noticed as a sunset committee. We felt like if we said local Doge, we'd have too many people here during the meeting, and, and we'd run out of seats. So in, in a serious concept, and in a very forward-thinking understanding of how government should operate, I think that local matters most, because this is where we implement, and this is where we actually interact one-on-one, face-to-face with, you know, our, our customer and, and our taxpayer the most. So with Department of Government Efficiency and everything we've seen over the last couple of weeks even, we would be foolish to think that we are not going to get the trickle-down effect that's going to hit us at the local level, where we may have old codes and standards, old requirements, old ways of doing business, that our staff is still trying to implement, when you have a federal government that is saying, we're not doing that anymore, or we're changing this, or this is a new metric. And so the amount of time that that normally takes to go from the federal level to get through state and to get down to the local level, what we could do is, we could propose a sunset committee. We could propose anywhere from, say, 12 to 20 citizens that we could put on a committee for up to one year. And, and we could do a pilot for one year to see what the effectiveness is of this. And this wouldn't just be, you know, building codes and building standards, even though I'm a builder, and I could go through, and I could tell you just one after the next of things that we shouldn't have that in there anymore. That's so old and outdated. We don't need that. We, we need those inspectors to know that they're no longer required to enforce that, because we don't do business that way anymore. But it would come all the way across. I think about the EPA. I think about some of those requirements. I think about like, maybe some of our TCEQ issues with dust control barriers and, and, you know, erosion control and things like that, that I believe that this administration's going to change. We could have a citizen committee that is spun up and ready to work on all of those changes, as we see them coming down from the federal level. This would give us an opportunity to move forward in a proactive way of doing business with our customer, because I'm trying to accomplish one thing. Over the last two years, we have pushed and pushed and pushed, and we have gotten much better staff and engagement on customer service. Amarillo is a friendlier city to do business with, a little bit. Like, it's got better. And I love that. I, I love that building safety is better. But man, do we have a long way to go in customer service at the pace at which we work at in today's environment. And that's not anything against any individual department or staff. Staff is working very diligently. Most of those ladies and gentlemen bend over backward to try to work with our citizens. Most of the time, it is the bureaucracy and the red tape and the constant back and forth, and the lack of streamlined and business principles that we're held to of, well, that's the way we still do it. And so this committee would be comprised of, counsel, I'd like to direct this to you guys. This committee would be comprised of maybe the board chairs that already sit on some of our current boards. So P&amp;Z is a good example. A lot of your planning and zoning issues, they, they take a lot of, oh, let's just say difficulties from the public in trying to get through the system. And so you could take maybe the P&amp;Z chair and put them on this sunset committee. You could take your LGC guy and put them over here. You could, you could pull in, maybe you're a construction advisory and appeals committee. And so one that I ran across, just as an example, I had a drafts person calling me saying, hey, I'm hung up. I can't get my plan approved, because your plan reviewer found a code that shows that we're not allowed to have more than 24-foot wide curb cuts on our residences. And I'm like, really? Well, three-car garage, you know, we've, we do those all over. So I have 30-foot wide curb cuts all over town, and they're not in violation. Well, this is an old code that they found, and so, you know, let's just call them and tell them not to enforce it. Well, it doesn't work that way, because we tell those reviewers and those employees, if it's in the code, you have to enforce it. You know, you have to figure out a way, rules for everybody. So like, if it's the rule, then we, we, we've got to be black and white about it. And so I would like to take a stab at this on two fronts. One, we could go back through existing codes and standards, and some of the stuff that we're still trying to implement. I don't know that we have an ordinance that, you know, prevents you from maybe tying your horse up at the local saloon. But if we do, like, I don't know that we need that anymore. So we can do some housekeeping, we can get some things out. I know as people would hear this, you would think, okay, counsel is now going full frontal assault, like, towards the staff. Actually, in my discussions with the staff, they want their jobs to be streamlined, too. They want to find ways to work with the public. They want to be able to help citizens get through the process, but they can't just ignore the process. You can't just say, yeah, close enough, no big deal that you didn't put it on the plan. And so, so many things this way, I think, could be improved. And then back to my original point, I think we are going to see massive changes in how governments relate to their population. And I would love to have a citizen committee of very smart, well-respected, experienced individuals from multiple places in town and different walks of life that are willing to volunteer their time. Because I think that what I see coming is going to land on counsel, and future councils are going to have a harder time keeping up with, you know, the requests. And so this body would, would function in a great deal. So my, my idea, regardless if you call it Codes and Standards Task Force, Sunset Committee, Local Doge, I don't really care. I just want 20 good, hard-working people that are willing to make Amarillo easier to get around in and, and even more business-friendly. And, and I want them to help the staff as much as I want them to help the council and to help the taxpayer. So throwing that out there as a discussion item, if anybody wants to maybe give a gut reaction to that.
I'm not opposed, just walk me through kind of what the charge would be. I mean, so are they going to, as the government comes down with things they're trying to get rid of, and create policy that, or give recommendations as to how that's going to fit within the city?
Sure. Here's the way I would tackle it. I would think that we would want to form this committee first. And counsel would help to form this committee. I like the idea of bringing existing board members in, because they're already specialized and they're already kind of selected. I also like the idea of bringing staff into that meeting, so that you get some of that staff expertise. If there's a legal reason why we can't take that out, then we need to know, we're not wasting your time. And then I also like being able to onboard experts. Then, I think, once you get to that point, I'd almost like it to be twofold. One, responsive to changes that are coming down from the federal level. And with your state meeting right now, the state legislature's going to wrap up in, what, another 100-plus days? And, and just going through the bills and understanding how they impact your, your community is a task, much less, how do we implement some of these new rules and regulations? Or deregulate some of those old rules and regulations that are no longer viable? So with that, it's responsive. And I think your workload might be overwhelming just with that. However, if you got time, then what we would want is this committee to come together and say, where would our time be most well-spent? Do we want to focus on zoning? Do we want to focus on building safety? Do we want to focus on energy compliance? And you would, you would take a topic through that board. So energy code is an easy one to pick on. If 2026 energy codes get passed, no one will ever build anything, ever. Because you can't put 12 inches of insulation in a 3 1/2-inch wall. And so some of the stuff is so asinine in the ways in which they want to put GF CI breakers on the outlets to the mini-split heating and air. So that some sweet old lady trips that breaker on that little plug in the attic, and she doesn't know that. So she has to suffer through the hottest weekend of her life before somebody comes and helps her on Monday morning. Like, what is the purpose of this? You have a breaker for this, we already have redundancy, this is not a life safety mechanism. So my passion for that is, is there are plenty of targets to shoot at. I don't think you're going to get to go shoot at the GF CI, because I think this administration is going to keep you busy enough. But I think that, that doing nothing would, would leave us very, very unprepared for some of the largest changes that we should see in our nation.
I think it sounds great in theory, especially if we had a team of 25-year-old nerds that, you know, that Musk has to go do this. I think tasking individuals with it, you got to find the right individuals that are willing to do that, because I don't think it's going to be easy. Like you said, if it's going to be those that have expertise in the, in that field, that's great. In theory, I think it's great, if we can find the right people to do that and become more efficient, clean it up, clean up the books, be easier to deal with, absolutely. But, yeah. In theory, yes. If we can find the right people, I think that's going to be the thing.
I agree with you. I think it's a, it's a big swing. And, and it could be very, very overwhelming. That's why we would want to take a huge target of what this could do and isolate it into one single target that we know we can hit. I'm not trying to redo or, or duplicate services. I mean, we have, you know, Codes and Standards Appeals Commission that's looking at nothing but the National Electrical Code, and it's thick. And so we're not trying to go back through that entire volume, but I think what we, what we could at least be is responsive. So I understand the caution. And if we feel like it's too big for us to implement, then I think we're better to back away and just have, you know, a discussion item that didn't go anywhere. But ultimately, I don't think it is. I think, I think that where I've spoken about this, and I've talked to everybody, I think they all want to, I think citizens really would see the benefit in engaging like this.
100% support.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's something, and particularly, I mean, I don't know, Mayor, where, where do you, I mean, I hear the same thing that you do, as maybe where our biggest opportunity is, which is, it goes back to building and code, and people wanting to be able to do business. And so to me, that sounds like an area that you'd want to be, or this, this committee would be focusing on.
Yeah, I, I believe so. I think codes and standards and the way you do business with your city could be the first one you, you look to. Because I think that's where the majority of what you and I get is frustration. So, and, and it's not just building safety as much as it is, you know, let's say grease traps and environmental health, and all of the things that overlay multiple, multiple items that we, you know, 50 years ago, we didn't have all this to do business, and we, we got along pretty good. You know, now we have so many things that overlap. It's very, very difficult for a small businessman, or woman, to even keep up with all of the permits, and all of the fees, and all of the different inspections, and so much. And so if anything, if we just keep it from getting worse, it's a win.
But this, but we would kind of, I mean, with this committee's input, I mean, determine maybe the focus area. I mean, it's not like they're looking at every ordinance we have, and which ones need to be changed, but giving them some focus in these particular areas that you're talking about.
Right. So I'm not necessarily saying that, that counsel needs to guide this, but I do believe that the way we would vision this, we would need to give guidance of, you know, committee, there's 12 of you. We'd like to know, these are the three areas that we have the experience in of knowing that this is where our common problems lie, this is where a lot of our normal red tape difficulties are. Which of these three would you like to work on? And then based on that, bring us back your understanding of, of your task. And so, you know, if they come back and they say, well, on these codes and standards, we think that, you know, as an example, let's say generators are something that are popular, and people are wanting generators, and we're struggling on every one we try to install. That's a real simple one to get through the system, because we're requiring you to, to draw a site plan for your entire property to show where a small box may sit on the side of your house. And so like, could they just take that one item, streamline that, fix the problem, and, and help the community? I think those types of discussions where I would like to engage with that committee, and then I would love for counsel to be able to direct it.
And kind of the metric we're going to measure their success by is, is streamlining it. I mean, removing obstacles or unnecessary things to do business with the city, or without obviously compromising safety or anything like that. But kind of the metrics of, of which we'll, we'll tell them, we, this is what we want them to accomplish.
I think the guideline that I would focus on, where, where it's very helpful for me in kind of the balance that's needed in good governance, is life safety's life safety, and, and we need to abide by that 100%. And we can't save a dollar to compromise life safety. So outside of that, there's a lot of things that are more recommended or preferred. And so those preferences, when you minimize the amount of preferences you have to abide by to get through a system, I think the metric's pretty easy to see the success. And the real success is going to be, does staff like it? So i- if we get something to staff, and they say, oh, we can work with this. Yeah, this is fine. I can still do my job, I still feel comfortable, these things weren't important anyway, you know, but yeah, I like that I don't have to require all that paperwork. So energy code, 100%. I, I mean, we build things now that by return on investment for some of the changes that have happened over the last five years are, are less than a nickel on a dollar. And I'm going to charge you $20,000 more to build your structure. And your, your electric bill was 200 a month, and, and now it's $194. And so your payout is, is nil. And so like, energy compliance, energy code is one thing that I'd love to go after.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. I say all that to just set one expectation. The state can force adoption on different things and say, this is where we're moving, and you guys have to move. And so we then, as a community, have to look at, do we run any risk in not adopting these updated codes or pushing back in, you know, our bond rating? Well, I guess it wouldn't be our bond rating, it'd be our insurance rating. And so once again, it's life safety. And so if we can get a good community together of our citizens working on this, I think we can, we can gain a little ground there. And I hope that at the state level, they're pushing for us as well. Because it's almost impossible to run a small business in today's world. So, anything further on item eight G? Y'all good with Sunset Committee? Or you want to call it Codes and Standards Task Force? Or you got a better name?
I was going to say Mini Doge, but... So you want us to come back with names, or what kind of?
Nah, I'm just curious. It doesn't matter what we name it. I just didn't want to.
Names for, start working on?
Oh, names for this? Yes. You know what we would like? Here's, here's where we get a little direction. Let's just call it the Sunset Committee for right now, and then they can come up with their own name. So Deputy, could we get a list of all current board chairs and a list of all those boards? And then let's go through that, guys, and let's see if we want to come up with three main targets to shoot at, and which of those boards are applicable. So if I sit on the PID out at the Greenways, that doesn't necessarily qualify me for zoning, right? But if I'm a surveyor, I probably have a pretty good idea of what I'm looking at there. So with that, I think we could come through, and we could pull some of those board chairs, or, or maybe vice chairs, whatever it is. So if we get that list, then I'd like to bring this back for a second discussion. And then at some point within the next month to two months, we would go ahead and bring nominations based on what we feel like we're going after. If I can talk y'all into energy compliance, then I think I could bring some really good energy code experts to that table. And this would be something that if it is successful, it would morph and change. You're never sitting on this board for very long. So it's going to be pretty high-impact and a lot of work to get the job done. But then you're rolling off, because there's going to be additional items that are coming on.
Yes, we can get those, too. Would you also like us to work on a resolution to basically create this task force? And some of the parameters that we've worked on?
I'm going to say not yet. And here's why. I know I'm pushing this pretty hard, and I really don't want to be the only one driving it. So I'm looking for a little more buy-in, and I think I'd go better with my counsel slower. So let me get a second discussion and talk through some of this. After you digest this, you'll, you'll start thinking about, like, maybe, maybe it won't work. Maybe this is too much work, or what, what other problems are we going to cause? So I'd like to come back to the discussion one more time, and then put forward the resolution to actually create a committee.
Sounds good. We'll get you those names.
Thank you, Deputy. Hey, thanks, guys. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Any future requested agenda items for item 8H?
No.
Okay. Let's take a 15-minute recess. We'll come back in here 5:25 and we'll finish up.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will.
Oh, yeah. You got 50 off one night?
Uh, I can't get over there. I'll get to him.
All right. Last meeting in the old chamber and it's only 5:24. So, these guys are like, hurry up, we might actually get out of here on time. We have completed, uh, section eight. We need to go into our consent agenda. I need to pull item nine N. Do we have anything else that council sees?
Nine E.
Nine E. Anything else, council? Nothing?
No, sir.
Okay. So, I would ask for a motion to consider the consent agenda without N and E, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ask for it presented with the exception of nine E and nine N.
Second? Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that portion of the consent agenda has been passed. Let's start with nine E. Let me look at the deputy and see who he may want to bring up here to discuss this consideration for Transformation Park.
I think it will depend on what the questions are.
Okay. Well, let me give it back to Councilman Sherlin. Tell us your concern on this one and what you'd like.
The main concern I had is I gave you a couple of suggestions at looking at leasing cameras and stuff, and I don't think we need to go long until we get a report back from them. Did you check and see if it leased? Is it cheaper or something like that? I mean-
We'll have to follow up with Mark Zimmerman. I know he was going to look into those options, but I've not received an update on that at this point, but we're happy to report back with that information.
Then, I would like to pull this off until, uh-
Okay.
-next meeting or something.
So, do we know the timeframe for Transformation Park? Are they on schedule to open, what, April?
Yes, mid-April. Yes.
Okay, mid-April.
Yes.
Okay. And so, no reason that February 11th or February 25th would be a problem on this issuance?
I'm looking back at Jerry because I know there's some items that, is there, do you see any issues on that?
No, we should still be able to-
Okay.
Great.
So, specifically related to the leasing of cameras?
Well, they had presented buying cameras and it's a fairly big number.
Yes, sir.
And I asked the question, is there possible lease on this equipment? Because I understand you can't lease that because I'd hate to buy it and not know if it's going to work or if it does work or that type of thing. And that's just my looking after the taxpayers' money.
Yes, sir. We'll get an update from Mark on that.
And I don't, I don't have any problem with delay. The only thing that comes to mind was, I believe, our police department was requesting that this would integrate into our system somehow so that they could see it down at maybe the regional crime center or, and so, I, I think maybe that component of it may limit, say, a local security company.
Possible whether we have access to it, the ownership versus lease, that's something we'll have to investigate as well.
Yeah, so, it may come back the same. I don't know. I'm fine to wait and, and do our due diligence, but the only thing that I could think may keep you from just going out and having a third-party vendor that saves you cash on the front end would be that request. Any other discussion on nine E?
No.
Okay, so, do we want to motion to table it or are we good just leaving it with no action?
I think we're good either way.
Okay.
We'll bring it back next meeting.
Councilman, you good to just leave it with no action?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item nine N. Item nine N was pulled simply because it wasn't ready. Ms. Coggins, do you have anything you want to elaborate on, on that?
No, we will have that item updated and ready and finalized for the next meeting on February 25th, so-
Really good.
-if council so chooses, just take no action.
We'll take no action on nine N then as well.